All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here for the April 28th Planning Commission meeting. We will start tonight with the minutes of the meeting from March. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second of the discussion. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is an opportunity, if you have any items you want to talk to the commission about that are not on tonight's agenda, we've got a portion of the meeting set aside for you at this point. So if you have that, please come forward. If not, we will move on to our agenda. Catherine, any announcements for tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring everybody up to date on some of the things that we're doing with the concept Regulating Plan. As some of you know, the board was interested in getting additional information more than what is currently on the bubble plan. We've been working with a group of design professionals and with Alderman-Petersen to try to put something together that may be a combination of the two plans that will give both the board the information they need and will allow the developers to skip a step thereby condensing the amount of review time. We are going to be bringing that to the design professionals next Wednesday for their comment and anticipate that it will come to you either in June or shortly thereafter.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, is there, does the staff or commission know of any items or anybody in the audience know of items that want to be considered tonight for our non-agenda? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our consent agenda. I've been asked to pull items number eight, or item number eight. So if you can note that on your list, anyone in staff, commission, or in the audience who wants to pull any items off of consent agenda? Okay, I see none, then we will start with the initial consent. Items that are listed there is initial consent. Can I have a motion for approval of the initial consent?
Motion for approval.
Less, of course, less item number eight. Did that include, who made the motion? Okay. And moved to second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, then I'm going to turn the floor over to Roger to consider the secondary consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we have a series of items for secondary consent. These include any items in which commission members may have need to recuse themselves. The items that we have listed for secondary consent tonight are items number 25, 28, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43, item number 49, 51, and 56. Is there a motion for acceptance?
Move for approval.
Second.
Andy, I will not be voting on item number 25.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Roger. Let's start with item number eight. Avalon PUD subdivision site plan, section four, revision one, extend the performance agreement for landscape improvements.
Mr. Chairman, I requested that this be pulled from consent. Originally, the staff recommendation was to extend to April 2012. I'd like to amend that recommendation to extend to November 17, 2011.
Okay. Is there, 2000?
November, November of 2011.
Thank you. All right, anyone in the audience wants to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, then is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it. All right, we'll move to item number 47. Hurst Park PUD subdivision site plan, section two, revision one, 28 lots on 13.97 acres located at the northwest corner of Highway 96 East and Hurstborn Park Boulevard.
Mr. Chairman, staff originally recommended deferral of this item due to insufficient information about the water quality calculations for the site, but since that child applicant has gotten the necessary information to staff and we're now recommending approval with conditions, and condition number six may be removed.
Number six?
Number six, yes.
Okay. All right, anyone in the audience wants to speak to this item other than the applicant? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant here tonight? Could you come forward?
My name's Mark Spalding with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this.
Okay, thank you. Now, you did have, as I understand, tonight 10 minutes to speak. If you wanted to say more, you're welcome to.
That's all right.
All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved to second, any discussion?
And this is removing?
Removing item six, condition six.
Mr. Chairman, I refuse my staff from this item.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's have it.
Thank you.
All right, item number 49, no, 50, excuse me, item 50. Village of Eddie Lane subdivision preliminary plat, four lots on 7.2 acres located at 412 Eddie Lane.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval with conditions. We would like to add to engineering conditions, the first being the unnamed creek shall be labeled as Ralston Creek, and the second being exhibit A of the lot line clearing agreement shall be revised to show the updated lot lines as located on the preliminary plat. And I believe all of you received that earlier in an email this week.
Can you tell me the first added condition that you wanted again, please?
The unnamed creek shall be labeled as Ralston Creek.
Okay. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item other than the applicant? Okay, could you please come forward and state your name and where you live? And if you can keep your comments to two minutes, that would be great.
Hello, my name is Samantha Fisher. I live on Eddie Lane, and that unnamed creek is in my front yard. And apparently...
Is this one, are you referring to this floodplain area or the part back there? Which way?
The creek at the rear of the, the rear of the lot.
Okay, so you do know that there's a wet water creek that goes through the front of the lot that starts?
Up there where the factory is.
And comes through my yard during wet water, and that Mr. Barnhill has seen it come through my yard in wet water and go straight into my yard and goes right through here and going right, this is that wet water creek goes right through that area. Right now, the area in the back in Danny Dodd's lot, up to the number where you say that, see that S-78 number, is flooded right this minute. Mr. Barnhill came out and saw it this afternoon. Where they, where they want to propose several of those houses was flooded last May, I watched it. Why is someone being able to propose to be putting housing in the floodplain?
Well, those three lots actually would have to be raised out of the floodplain.
And when they do that, are they going to cause my house, which was built in 1948, to get flooded for the first time the next time we have a rain? The person who built my house lived in this spot behind, the house is currently there, because his father lived in that house, he lived behind it. He saw what the flood was in 1948. He knew where to put the house so it'd never get flooded. My house has never been flooded, but I see where that, my, the owner of the property has already put rocks into what was in the floodplain already, and if we'd had a flood like last year, my yard would have gotten flooded. My house could have possibly gotten flooded this time with that minor change he's already made.
All right, thank you, ma'am. We'll have staff address that. Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before the motion, you may want to follow the, having the applicant speak.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for the reminder. Is there someone representing the applicant? Please come forward.
I'm Gerald, you see, engineer for the developer, Mr. Joe Mels, and I'd like to, I'd like to address his comments that were made earlier.
Okay.
This, this area is in the floodplain. All of this is in the floodplain right now, including this back here. But what we propose to do is to take fill out of the floodplain down in the bottom and put it up here and do a cut fill balance to where there won't be any, any net displacement of the floodwaters. And that's already been scrutinized by the staff and by both engineering staffs. Also, we've got drainage easements set up to pipe the water away from this area right here along this lot line, so we've already addressed that and will address it further in the site plan.
Okay. Anything else?
I'd be glad to answer questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion? No one wants to present a motion?
I move for disapproval.
Move for disapproval? Is there a second to that?
A second, because I think since this is a plat, it has to have some decision made on it one way or the other.
Okay, all right, it's been moved to second to disapprove the plat. Any discussion? Ms. Pearson?
One of the questions that I had is, how many cubic yards of cut and fill would be needed here?
It's, it roughly figures about 6,000. We'd be taking about 6,000 out of the bottom down there and, and putting it up in the, in the lot areas, and the lot areas have to be, the lots themselves have to be totally out of the floodplain. And then there would be transition slopes down from these lots, from these lots down into the bottom, and also transitions over to the main lot line right now as it stands. And then all that material would come out of this area right here, not, not out of the, of the bumper area down here where the creek is, but all along right in here.
So what is, what is all the material that's behind there, the rocks and the boulders and stuff?
That was some, that was some waste concrete that he brought in to, what, what the applicant wants to do is, is back in here behind the house, he wants to build him a garage and he's going to use that to put in below that garage there.
Wouldn't that be considered in field then?
No, because it's not the floodplain. This part right here is not the floodplain. What's, what's going to have to happen on this, on this piece of property, more than likely, is it going to have to, there's going to have to be some material brought in that'll be better material than what's in the bottom. That material that, if it's not good enough to hold up a house, then it'll have to be hauled out, and other material may have to be brought in, but the net will be the same as far as cut and fill, and it'll balance.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, I had a question, and actually I'd asked this of some members of our staff, but I hadn't heard back, not, not people that are here tonight, but I didn't, I didn't know about zero fill. I understood, I mean, my, my thought of fill, cutting fill was it would be cut out of the property and then filled on another place of the property.
If, if the material's adequate to hold up a residential structure, it'll all come out of there. But if it's not, and I have an idea it's not, because it's probably, you know, silt that's been deposited there over the years, and it's probably not good clay quality material that, that would want to use underneath the house. We don't know until we start excavating, but I'm just pretty sure that, that some of it's not going to be adequate, so we'll have to exchange the material, but the net will be the same.
I guess I could ask our staff then, is, have, do we, is that customary for us?
See, most of the time when we do this, it's a, it's a larger development, so there's a lot of dirt moving to different places, so this is a little different because it's just one lot basically that's been changed, so I don't know if we've ever, you know, had a place where we had to check and see if what was coming in was in what was going out.
Did, did we do this at Heath Place, those two lots in, in the front? Did you go into Heath Place, remember?
I wonder what you're talking about, that, where that's built up there?
Yeah.
I thought that was dug out in front of it, but I don't know. I mean, that's what I assumed.
But, but that is the same, is that not the same principle that we're talking here?
I, I don't know the answer to that exactly. I believe that, that material probably was, that was before I was involved in that too, but I believe that material was all from onsite, but there again, you're dealing with a pretty significantly larger tract of land to draw material from there.
See, this, I'm sorry, this, this cut fill, this cut fill balance will, will all be done on paper before it's ever done, you know, anything in the field. And all, all of the cut fill calculations will, will help us to derive contour lines that we go by. And whether we get, whether we take all the material out of that site, bring in all new material, the contours, the finished contours will, will still be the same so as to cut and fill balance. And, and also, by the way, it's, it's not only scrutinized by the engineering departments here in the city, we have to get a letter of map revision for the fill from FEMA, so they'll also be scrutinizing.
Is it safe to assume that you need to, in this scenario, cut on the high end of the site? You can't cut from the low end? You know what I mean? If it's upstream, you would, you would cut upstream to fill downstream? Otherwise, you're going to affect the properties upstream?
We don't have a specific requirement about that.
Well, you, without it being said, you know what our concerns are, that we, we sat out there last year and watched, watched the flood and watched a lot of those houses that haven't been moved back into now, plus we've got a, which is probably not too significant a flood, and we've got water in, in the back of a lot of those lots now, and they're looking at the same thing, and what they're seeing down there is, is a humongous pile of rocks down there, and we're saying that they're not even going to be used in the floodplain. They're going to be used to build a garage on, and then we're saying that there's an even amount going to be taken out and an even amount going to be put back in. But you're filling in the, the low places where the water runs, and I assume you're doing, piping that out someplace, but I don't see that going anywhere, but just down in the back of the field back there someplace, draining into the little creek that runs through Pinkerton Park that goes into the Harpeth River. And I, I can understand where they're, what the residents are saying is they're very concerned that there's potential for you, for this project to adversely affect and, and have water pushed back on them or pushed up the stream and not, and not affect the, not affect this project at all, because they're going to build a pile enough now that they know where it is, they're going to build a pile enough to be out of the floodplain. But a lot of those houses up there, they have not, are not, and still have not been moved back into it, are not habitable, so that's where their concerns are. And when I drive by and I see a big pile of rocks out in the back, and I think, if the rocks are going in, is that much dirt coming out? And now we're told that's not even part of filling in the floodplain, so that's, those are, those are my concerns. That's what I'm expressing, and that's what I'm hearing from the residents over there.
All right, any other comments?
Is, is the, the creek that runs across the front, creek ditch, whatever it is, is that a, is that a, has there been a stream determination made on that? Is that a blue line stream?
No, it's not a, it's, it's a wet weather conveyance that just, just runs when, you know, when they're, when it's raining.
And that's a determination that's been made, that it is a wet weather conveyance, or is that?
Yes, I mean, it's not, it's not labeled, it's not a blue line. It's, it's a, it's a drainage conveyance is all it is. Now, there may be a wet weather spring back up in there, I don't know, but, but we'll have to size whatever, whatever kind of toll it takes to pipe it away. And that's, the easements are already shown on the, on the preliminary plat there, just to the south side of Lot 1 there. And there's also one down here between Lots 3 and 4 that will do the same thing, will have to pipe that, that away this way over.
Any other comments? All right, before we go ahead.
I just want to say, the actual only piece of this entire lot that's out of the floodplain is the little part that's in the loop of that, you know, where the house is, basically. All the rest of that is, is in the floodplain. That's the only piece that's currently out.
Right.
And I guess my question would be, how much of that rock is out there now? I mean, how many cubic yards of that is there? Because I, I was wondering if, if you're going to build up, you know, that's not in the floodplain, it looks like it would kind of cover the, all of the lot that's, that's out of the floodplain. I mean, all of the piece of it that's out of the floodplain.
Well, let me, let me say again that that, that concrete will not be taken into consideration on the cut fill. You know, the, the topography has already been done before that was ever brought in. And, and that will determine how much can be cut and how much can be filled, and it'll have to balance. And, and these people in FEMA will also, will all see to that.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I would just like to state the reasons for my request, possible denial. I don't think that we have enough information here to satisfy me that by building these houses and mitigating existing floodway, that it's not adversely going to affect the homes around there is the reason I cannot support this.
Okay, thank you. Now, who, who seconded that?
I did.
Are you okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to anticipate one question. When you pipe the water away, when you're talking about on either side, where are you piping it to?
Down in the bottom.
Okay. So, but it's running down there now?
That's where it's going now, right.
Now, this is the, oh, sorry.
And the other thing is, was the concrete hauled in there illegally? I mean, was it moved? Is that?
That's my question.
I guess, I guess we'll, you want, you want me to skip that question?
No, our, our standard for a land disturbance permit is a disturbance of 5,000 square feet, and when they put it in there, there was not initially a trigger for a grading permit or anything that would require them to show us a grading plan to be reviewed or approved. So the area was small that it wasn't, it, it didn't trigger a, like I said, what we have right now is a grading permit requirement that, or a stormwater permit requirement that kicks into the area of 5,000 square feet, and it is an active construction zone for the renovations on the existing house, so.
All right, any other comments? And we're voting on the disapproval of the plat as stated by the original motion.
I just have a real quick question, the, because this is the preliminary plat, is the, the engineering or the science behind the calculation for this excavation, is it required prior to the final plat or in, and submitted at the same time as the final plat?
Any, any, any claim at a site plan?
It would be part of the site plan, and actually, before the final plat could be recorded, FEMA, they would have, actually, the applicant would have to have their letter of map revision from FEMA before the final plat could be recorded. So that cut and, cut and fill would have to be done prior to the recording of the final plat.
And under project consideration number two, it does indicate that a site plan shall be submitted for approvals prior to the beginning of any construction. The plan shall provide sufficient information to determine the location and amount of excavated material for borrow and fill to bring the lots into compliance, so that would be something that would be looked at at the time of site plan.
And there's a, there's a chance that with some, it's a chance, I'm just saying, that with the right cut and fill in here, this actually could be shown to improve the floodplain or the storage areas in some places. I mean, is it a potential?
That's not, until we saw the information.
It could improve the flow characteristics of that, of that area.
I'm just saying, without, without approving the preliminary plat, that we're not giving the opportunity to even study the area and, and apply the science, though I'm saying it may be a long shot to approve the final plat.
Sure.
Because there are a lot of concerns about this particular area and as a tributary to the Harpeth.
Right. You've got, you've got two more, basically two more shots at us.
There's a very fine line here as to whether you can be convincing enough to approve this. But I think by just saying no tonight, we don't even give the opportunity to, to study this.
But I guess we also have to weigh, in my opinion, do we even need to spend the time studying? I mean, if it's so, you know, because like you said, it's a very fine line.
Right.
And, and I understand that, that property owners do have the, you know, the, the right to fully use their property, but this is just, you know, less than a year ago, it's just, you know, this is, this is just one of those things that you almost have to decide, is it even worth it, you know, to study it? Because like you said, in my opinion, it might, it might make it better, but I don't know. And I, I just feel really, I feel really, I felt really antsy when I looked at this, considering the area, you know, and, and maybe, maybe, because we're talking about four houses here, right? Maybe if we were looking at one, I think, well, we might, we might be able to, you know, figure out a way to make that work before. I just feel, I'm, I'm feeling really, really doubtful about that, not having full information. But, uh...
It's hard to look at this and see there's enough area to cut.
Yes. Actually, that is a concern.
We've, we've already done a rough calculation on that, and we met with Tom Ingram and gone over that with him. It looks like we have, actually have about 2,000 more yards to cut than what we'll need to do, what we need to do.
It can actually cut up closer to the house than you would think, because they have, what they, the land that, or borrow area just has to be below flood stage, so it can have ground on top of it now and still be used to...
So in other words, taking out some of the part that's not in the floodplain at this time?
We will be taking some out of this, out of this slope up here, off of this slope up here to use over on lots.
How much fill do you anticipate on those lots? Is there a base flood elevation?
No.
Defined in that area?
No, they'll, they'll have to be, they'll be crawl space houses, and they'll have to be, the lot itself will have to be above the floodplain, all the lots, all of the, the entire lots will have to be above the floodplain according to the, to your ordinance. And by the way, your ordinance does allow these cut fill balances very clearly, and this is a classic case for that use section.
All right, any other comments? Gordon?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I want to give you just a thought on this, because I, we realized that it was an impacted area during the flood. We've communicated with the residents and the developer, Mr. Mels, has, has too, and throughout, for the last, over the last couple of years, which, which many of you know. But out of our stormwater ordinance... But out of our, our stormwater ordinance, um, it, it talks about cut and fill is permitted in the floodplain and waterway buffer and compensatory cuts should be applied at least in equal amounts of one to one. The compensatory cut shall be at least applied to 150% for all fill in floodplains with waterway reaches determined to be impacted or localized flooding. So, it's really could be to, improved by 50%. But this is an area that arguably, we don't have a, a lot of experience with and seeing frequently. And I would offer that, um, once plans are submitted, that not only our engineering staff review those critically, but also send them to a third party consultant that specializes in this area so we can even get another look. Because it's incumbent upon us to improve that situation. And I believe the developer is interested in doing that.
Sure.
But we need to provide assurance to our residents to accomplish that. So, as we go forward, just keep that in mind that, um, as I was sitting and listening to the dialogue and then having dialogue with residents, um, I think that achieves the desired result for all and meets, uh, improves the situation.
Well, wait. Let us say though, there's a well-known principle that whenever the, the river also deposits again and there are some experts who say that unless you, unless you make a major change in it, it's just gonna redeposit as it comes back again. And that will not stay.
And, and that's, that's the decision you're gonna be charged with.
All right. Any other discussion?
I wouldn't think, I'd like to speak to that. I, I can't imagine it depositing there any more than it does anyplace else.
But, but, you know, it's like repairian, something where they talk about the river and it redeposes the sand back on the same, or the, yeah.
Oh, there's, isn't written to handle that. And I'm afraid if we don't allow this applicant to continue, there may be some legal ramifications. Cause he is following the letter of, of the ordinance.
And I just, and I'd like to say too, that I, you know, it's, the compensation of cuts with fills is a, is, is defined in our regulations. It's a normal part of the process of, 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 of properly filling an area without net loss of storage associated with your floodplain. It's, it's a relatively small creek, um, um, but it's difficult to follow actually on these, on these drawings. It's, it's difficult to, it's difficult for me to say. We don't have a sense of how much fill. You know, we're elevating houses that were flooded right now to, to, to high levels. I don't have a sense of, of how much fill goes on the upper parts of the site relative to how much goes in the lower part.
And let me just say that this, this preliminary plat is not intended for that.
Right.
That, that comes at the site plan stage and that's when we get down to the nuts and bolts of, of how it's cut and how it's filled and how it balances out.
And my concern sometime is that, that this, this board has on, on a number of occasions considered plans that were just kind of a stretch for what the lots constituted. And if there's a reasonable approach to compensating cuts and fills and, and that these four lots would be constructed at a level that, that doesn't look like they're on a hill relative to the rest of the houses on the, on the street. And it's, there's not a sheer drop off in the back because we've.
That's the concern, that's the concern right there.
To excavate enough in the back to fill on the front and maintain our storage and things like that.
We figured five to one slopes on, on the back. Uh, there were some small portions that were three to one, but that, I mean, three to one, you can mow.
Yeah.
So, we don't, we don't have any steep.
And a five to one slope is a, is.
Five to one's really comfortable, you know?
So, I guess from that perspective, I, I would be interested in seeing more detail about how this, this goes forward.
There will have to be a whole lot more detail.
All right.
We, we've already gotten into a lot of detail and, and done preliminary cut and fill balances, but, uh, there'll have to be a lot more detail in the site plan stage. And also, let me, let me say again that FEMA, uh, is gonna be scrutinizing this in addition to your staff. I mean, they don't, they don't pass out letters of map revision, uh, like candy. And it's probably, it's probably gonna take, uh, six months to get, you know, to get an answer from them.
Right.
So, they're, they're gonna look at it pretty hard in addition to your staff.
All right. Any other discussion?
Let me just ask, I think I know the answer. On the map revision, do you have to have it done before they look at it? Or do they just approve your plans?
I, you know, I'm a little confused about that myself, but I, I think we have to have it done on paper and then I'd prefer to go ahead and submit it then.
The process probably would be to submit a conditional letter of, an application for a conditional letter of map revision based on fill. And then if they're comfortable with that, if they approve that, then, and, and this, and this board and the staff agrees and you proceed with this, then there would have to be a letter of map from.
Right.
Revision based on fill, a longer F filed after the, the work was done to, to essentially to certify that these lots are constructed out of the floodplain.
Right.
And, and that, that final product. Cause I, I do, I do community acknowledgement sign offs for all the letters of map amendment in Nashville. So, I, I see these on a regular basis, but, um, and the, and the net effect of that is to be able to certify that the lots, if all the lots are filled, all parts of the lots are filled above the, the base flood elevation, then, then it can be certified that they're out of the floodway.
Right.
Out of the floodplain, so. All right. Any other comments?
I just had a question. When all these calculations are done, is there a way that it can be calculated to determine how the, how it would affect the flooding of the other homes that's around in the areas that, that people have concerns about? Is that part of the stormwater process?
The stormwater calculations will show that there won't be any adverse effect on the other property.
And, and it's already showing that?
No, it will show.
It will show? Okay. So, at the next level, the site plan level, there will be an opportunity for us to determine? We'll have that information at that time?
You will have the information, but it is an administrative review and approval at the site plan.
Okay. But it goes through you guys?
It does.
And you all know the concerns?
So, you mean the site plan for this will just be administered, administratively approved? Yes. You will see it on your agenda, but it will have been approved the week before. Well, let me say something. Most of the time, you know, on the day, on the days whenever we're supposed to say yes or no, our material comes out, what, one day before that? So, if you get it and you can, and you, you have to read it that day and, and, and send something and, and, and contact the staff the next day on, on some of these things.
You don't have time.
And so, I know some of us, I, I don't always get to pick my materials up that day. And, uh, that, that, you know, I thought we were supposed to have a, a week in there, but we don't anymore.
That was, that was removed from the ordinance before it became effective. So, if it's administrative, it stays administrative. If it's planning commission, it stays, obviously, planning commission track, but.
So, you mean, even if we want to request seeing it?
So, really, that's different than what has been portrayed here tonight? Cause it's like, okay, let's approve this preliminary plan because you're gonna have the site, so really, no. That's not true. So, I mean, we'll prove it tonight and then it's an administrative. If you guys feel that if it, basically, that's it for us.
The site plan will have to meet all the zoning requirements, all the subdivision requirements.
But I just want to be clear, cause that isn't what, that wasn't the conversation before though. I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Well, let me clarify what I said. I said you'll have two more shots at me. They will.
They will.
And you will have a shot at the final plat stage also.
But knowing that there are concerns and can't we have a request specially for it to be, even though you can do it administratively, can't we request for it to come back to the planning commission? Because there are concerns. Because.
You re, you really don't have any authority to do that, cause you've already passed the zoning ordinance that says what's gonna be administrative and what's not. It would be abnormal and really out of process to do that.
Okay. So, what Greg said didn't really.
Okay. So, if you give administrative approval, then they get to do the fill before it comes back to the final plat?
That's the way I understand it.
That's what I think too.
That's exactly right.
Yeah. We do the, well, there's a conditional.
With the ability to start construction work, but we would require the site plan to come in before the, before they would be able to get the grading permit and stormwater permit. But, I mean, that's why the preliminary plat gives them kinda that gateway approval is they're okay to be vested in that to move forward.
All right. Any other? And just to, to, to kinda further clarify, that in a traditional study of, of construction in the floodplain or the floodway, uh, a typical evaluation of, of the potential to cause effect by filling is usually reserved for construction in the floodway as opposed to the flood, floodplain. Um, we, we, and I can't cite our, our regulations exactly, but, but the requirement to conduct a no-rise study or a study that defines no significant effect on any other parts of floodway is usually reserved for construction that is in the floodway itself as opposed to the wider floodplain. The effect of what he's proposing to do is to balance his cuts and fills so that there's no net loss of storage in the floodplain. We're not encroaching into the floodplain. We're keeping it as wide as it is now. And in fact, by removing some of this hump that extends out into the floodway now, it probably, it probably, um, makes for more effective flow across the back of this lot. It's also a relatively small creek on it with probably a relatively small drainage space.
Don't, don't, on, on stormwater, don't you have a buffer that you cannot disturb? So, you're really not cutting it out of the floodway?
That's shown on, on that plan.
That's right. You are not cutting it out of the floodway. Because you've got, we've got the buffer that you cannot disturb.
Well, the buffer, the buffer is just determined by the ordinance. It's not necessarily determined by whether it's floodway or not. There's a 60-foot buffer there that's shown on the, on the preliminary plat and it's put there by your ordinance. And we can't disturb within that 60 feet. It has really nothing to do with it's in the floodway or, or floodplain or anything else. It's just a 60-foot buffer away from the stream bank that, beyond which we can't go with any excavation.
All right. Is there any other comments from the commission? I remember we're voting for disapproval is the motion. All in favor of disapproval, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
With a no's, please hold the hands up. Before no's, I will vote no as well. So, motion is denied. So, we will move to the next item.
No, you have to, you have to have, you have to do something.
Still have to have.
We still have to, okay. There's no motion yet. Sorry. We do. Move for approval is that recommendation. Okay. Moved and segmented?
I, I have some more comment that I wanna make.
Please.
Now that I find out that on this approval, then that means that everything gets done and the only time it will come back to us is as a final plat with the whole thing accomplished. I, I feel very strongly that that is not appropriate here. I don't know whether any of you have driven by there? You've got this part up in the.
Apparently I have.
Yeah, some of us, some of us have. But, yeah, it's today, in fact. But the thing is that it just goes, you know, that's the reason I was asking about how many yards it's gonna take, cubic yards it's gonna take. It's got the house and the part around it and then everything else just, you know, I don't know what's that slope is now. I, I didn't, I don't know that it even shows that. I guess it does, but I didn't measure it here. But on both sides there, it, it is, it is something that is, I can understand is concern of the neighbors. And it's not just the ones who have, who have been here tonight. I know, I know that some of you've gotten some emails also about this. And, um, now that I, now that I understand that with the approval here, it basically comes back as something accomplished, uh, to us.
Well, is it possible for the final plat to, out of condition of approval at the preliminary plat level to require some additional information regarding this cut and fill balance? Uh, is it also possible to, um, set some parameters as to when that final plat has to be approved by the planning commission prior to commencing work?
Our zoning ordinance has certain criteria for timing and submittals and what's submitted at that time. Whether we could move outside of that, I'm not sure.
Are you asking to speed the process up?
No, not necessarily. I'm just saying, we would like to see some more information about the cut and fill on this particular project, this particular site because of this, these conditions. And, uh, I'd like to make a condition of approval that we see some additional information. It's not typically required on the preliminary plat, on the final plat.
If that's what you want, then probably the better way to do it is to deny to not asking them to come back with that as part of their preliminary plat. Cause this is your only option, only time to look at it before the final plat.
And it'll already been cut and filled by then.
Yeah, it'll already be.
That's right.
This is the time.
Yeah, but they've gotta convince staff that that's, they're gonna be able to pull it off on this site or they're never gonna approve.
I'm just gonna say.
It's, it's, it's really.
I mean, it's all in the map.
Well, as I say, I wanna see what happens whenever they're talking about cutting this, cutting this out, this, this much space down there where they're, they're really cutting in between the buffer and the part that's not right up at the road.
Won't they have the same information, Steph? Won't they have that, that they would be, even if it was coming back to us, they will have the same calculations, the same information and all the things that they'll be bringing to us, they will have it. Even though they make the decision administratively, if it was coming to us, it would be the same facts, the same information. So, and they're making this decision and they're not just gonna make a decision just to make it. They're gonna have facts before they decide whether to approve it. They don't just approve something just because it's an administrative decision.
No. Steph is very clear in what we can approve and what we can't approve at the site plan level. And we would have to have all of the information regarding the cut and fill. We would also have to have, uh, any information that the state of Tennessee required or any other local information that we would require. FEMA, but whatever.
And it would be your decision to approve or disapprove.
Well, our decision only in as much as the ordinance allows us to make that decision.
Right.
And if it's denied tonight, then it, it goes away and there are no additional conditions associated with it. So, what you're saying is that, uh, we would advise them to come back with additional information and defer this for a period of time?
There's no deferring. You have to take action tonight. There's, you cannot defer this.
Right. But if it's denied, it goes away. There are no conditions of approvals associated with it.
Right. I think that the applicant would have to take away from this meeting what you need in order to approve it. And it would be incumbent upon the applicant to give you that information on the revised preliminary plat. If that's where, if that's how you want it to go tonight.
So, in other words, someone who voted on the prevailing side would have to make a motion to request, uh, denial again? That's the only way that you could get additional information. If you're going, if you ask for additional information.
Unless the applicant defers. The applicant can defer, you cannot.
We don't wish to defer.
And I understand the, the concerns and, because I have the same concerns. There, there's a, between the existing topo lines shown on this map, there's a more than 25-foot drop.
That's right.
From the, the level of the existing two-story house to the upper bank of the creek below, maybe more than 25, between 25 and 30-foot drop already. So, now we're gonna cut some more down here and fill some more up here. So, then, then we end up with what, a 35 or 40-foot? Elevation change between the, the, the house pads and the, and the creek down there?
Well, here, we're not, if, if you look at the elevation, the lower elevation, uh, it, close to, uh, the 60-foot buffer, that's the minimum elevation there will be. I mean, we can't cut below the, the top of the stream bank. So, I mean, all we do is we'll cut back into the slope as it rises up the hill. That's all we can do.
So, it looks like the slope around the buffer is around 622 or so.
Well, we, obviously, we can't, we can't cut below that. It wouldn't drain out.
But like you're saying, you will increase. The slope is gonna increase because now you're gonna fill, you're gonna cut and fill. So, you may not be able to cut below, but you're gonna raise.
We're gonna relocate the slopes, but the slopes are gonna be anywhere from three to one to five to one, which is, which is mobile and comfortable. And, and actually, uh, not much difference in the slopes. And, and actually, not much difference in the slopes right now.
Wait, not much difference in the slopes, you mean on the back, I hope?
No, the slopes, the slopes right now, where the slope down from this area right here, and here, the slopes will be very close to that, but what they'll be is the slopes will, will run across here. Now, instead of being around that way.
Well, I, I would like to make a motion that as a condition of site plan approval, that a certified third-party engineer be retained by the applicant, by the city, by the city for review and approval of the, the site plan.
Paid for by who?
I was going to say, who pays for that?
Paid for by the applicant.
Yeah.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that, and can we do that?
I'll second.
That's a question, can we?
We have used outside consultants at various times to assist us. I don't know that there's anything that would preclude us from doing that, but I couldn't tell you tonight whether that's true or not.
We end up hiring the same person that we have on staff right now. I mean, it's not going to increase your level of expertise in having somebody else review it.
Well, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the amendment to the main motion?
That is, though, part of the motion to approve.
Right.
We'll vote on the amendment first.
Oh, yes, I'm saying, that's what we're talking about.
All right, there's no discussion, then we're voting on the amendment to the main motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
With a no's, please raise your hand. Okay, motion passes. So we're back to the main motion, which is for approval of this preliminary plat. Any other comments on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
With a no's, please raise your hand. All right, motion fails.
Just move. Go back to side.
Should get them all? Five, five to three, motion fails. So, Sean, where does that put us?
Well, you have to, you have to.
If you have to make it in motion or within 35 days, some of the days they submitted their plat, it becomes final. I mean, it becomes, it becomes approved.
Approved.
So you need to do, if you don't, if you're okay with that, just understand that it will become approved, and if you're not, then you need to have another motion.
Move for disapproval.
Say that again.
I thought the motion for approval was, this.
I thought it just.
It was a motion to approve.
Right.
And it failed.
It failed.
So you took a motion. We've had two motions that have failed.
Move for disapproval.
Second.
Which is, which is.
The motion, the first one was to disapprove.
That's right. It failed.
That was to approve.
And it failed.
They still have to, well then, a passing motion?
In a final, in a case like this, you have to say on the record why you decided to disapprove, if that's what you're going to do. And we don't actually have a motion on the record to disapprove it, you have to say on the.
Yes, you do now. I move, move for disapproval.
On the grounds?
On the grounds that we do not, concerns about exactly how this is going to affect with amount, we don't have enough information, in my opinion, to approve this. We don't have enough information, this is not going to cause the situation in this area to be worse. And not only that, we don't get a chance to even look at the, the information may come in, but we won't get a chance to look at it. We, this is it for us, this is our only chance, and I do not feel comfortable, and I will not vote to approve this.
Second.
Clear enough?
And so, there could, there could be the potential for them to bring in some.
Because there isn't.
For, for information that might gain.
My hope, and is a comment, because we do have a second, is that this will, that this will be the, the information we're giving the applicant to say, look, I don't feel, we don't feel comfortable enough right now to approve this. They have the option of bringing in more information, which then we can look at it again, and just don't feel comfortable that this is our only shot at it.
Okay, any other comments?
And I agree with that assessment. Having voted against that initial motion, I, this is an uncomfortable presentation that I, as a stormwater engineer, I think that, that you should be encouraged to, to present something that doesn't affect the floodplain, floodway, the floodplain, that represents a reasonable approach toward construction on this side. And I don't feel that with this presentation.
All right, any other comments?
Could I have a comment?
Uh, no, we'll, we'll take a vote. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Three no's, please raise your hand for the no's.
You're in the, for three.
Okay, motion for denial passes. Okay, so let's move on to item number 52.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a zoning ordinance text amendment. I believe that you saw some of this text amendment information at a work session last month. It is just clarification in terms of what triggers changes to a, an approval, a site plan, and non-conformities. It's clarifying some information in terms of amendments and what the triggers for those amendments might be. Michael Wood can flush this out a little bit more.
Recommend approval?
You did a great job.
What, that flushes a lot. All right, anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? Okay, is there someone, we're, we are the applicant, so then let's move to a motion.
With approval.
Second.
And my only question is, I, I think whenever this came up before, I asked about a non-conforming lot. I did not see that definition. Did we find that somewhere? I forgot to bring it back up again.
Which, which, can we, can we bring it back later?
Yes, because, you know, we talked about non-conformities, but I think whenever I looked to find a non-conform, the definition or information about a non-conforming lot, I didn't see it.
Can't cover the lot record, but it kind of used interchangeably, and we're not.
Okay, I mean, I, you know, I went through and did search, 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 and I couldn't find it. But, but, but it may be there, that's, that's what I'm saying, I don't know. But I'd like that pointed out. I guess this, of course, will go to the Board of Mayor and Aldrin, and at, at that time, we could, we could look for it.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 53.
Mr. Chairman, this is again a zoning text amendment, and it again corrects minor textual errors and clarifies some information regarding parking for outdoor seating, freestanding canopies, and there is a provision there that canopies can be freestanding if they have functional solar equipment, so that's a, a nod to our sustainability. And some information on revising the definition of daycare centers. All of it, pretty much either removing duplications or revising and clarifying definitions.
Okay, is there a motion? May for approval.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item 55.
There is a vacant parcel on Boyd Mill Avenue between Glass Street and 11th Avenue that has never been assigned an address, and they have come in requesting an address, but there is no room to assign them a new address without reassigning, the existing addresses along Boyd Mill. Staff had had, had held a neighborhood meeting a while back, a few weeks ago, to review three options with, with the neighborhood, which are described in detail in your packets. And staff tonight is recommending option three, which is a comprehensive approach, which we hope will alleviate any need to revise these addresses in the future as if, if any area were to be developed in the vacant parcels that are along the street right now. So with that, and this is all within keeping of the new addressing manual that was approved in 2011, which allows, which gives the planning commission the authority to change addresses. So staff is recommending option three.
All right, and it appears as though there's no neighborhood opposition.
I was going to say.
I should say that when, when these options were presented with them, we had a really good discussion, an in-depth discussion, and they really were honestly saying that of course they would like to go with an option that wouldn't require them to change their addresses, but they really did understand the strength between the comprehensive approach and the envi, the emergency services aspects, too.
Okay, good. All right, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second. I have a question, though.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because we had an address change, and it was just because 30-something years ago they made an error. But now deeds, what's going to happen, because you know, we have a title search done? How, how is that addressed in this case? Because it wasn't done properly in my case.
Well, Lori DeRose, who's our planning associate, and she handles all the addressing, and she'll, she'll be working closely with the county and making those, and making those changes.
Okay, good, good.
And we'll send out a whole packet to, to the property owners to kind of try to guide them through this process.
Good, because it makes for some, if it's not done now, it'll be terrible in the future. Okay.
Good. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Catherine, anything else?
No.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.